Welcome to the regular meeting of Brisbane Planning Commission, Thursday, February 9th, 2017, 7:30 PM, Brisbane City Hall, 50 Park Place, Brisbane. A little call please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Present.
Commissioner Doe?
Present.
Commissioner Mackin?
Present.
The records show Commissioner Meneer is absent.
May I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
I move to adopt the agenda of Thursday, February 9th, 2017, as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent calendar, please note the items listed here as consent calendar items are considered routine and will be acted upon collectively by one motion adopting the planning department's recommendation unless a member of the public, the commission, or his staff asks to remove an item to discuss it. So prior to the motion, the chairperson will ask if anyone wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar. Seeing no such request, could I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented?
I will make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I have a question, though. Do we have quorum to approve that?
Yeah, quorum is three.
But there are only two people present at that meeting here.
Yes, because we had a turnover of new appointees and Commissioner Meneer was not there anyway.
Okay.
So the only other person absent from that five was Commissioner Reinhardt, who's termed out.
Okay.
So yeah, for this situation.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so for this situation, we're okay.
Okay.
So as you were saying, Commissioner Cunningham, no worries.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just to make it clear, it was the consent calendar. Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. We're moving on to oral communications. Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission and anything not on the agenda? No? Okay. Written communications. I have the Bay Area Monitor and the Sustainable San Mateo County Invitation for the 18th Annual Sustainability and Green Building Awards. So hopefully, some of the commissioners can join me on April 6th. Okay, new business. Public hearing use permit UP-10-16, use permit for outside storage of vehicles, equipment, and temporary staging of wood chips and logs for continuation and minor expansion of the previously granted use permit UP-1-11. The Davy Tree Expert Company is the applicant. Universal Paragon Corporation for Sierra Hotel Management Corporation is the owner. APNs 005-312-070 and 005-312-100. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. The Davy Tree Company currently occupies the warehouse at 131 Industrial Way as its place of business. They have been authorized to use the yard located along the north edge of the warehouse to store trucks and equipment and for temporary staging for recycling of wood chips. That yard area is part of the vacant site of 55 Industrial Way, also referred to as 55C Industrial Way. Several use permits have been granted by the Planning Commission over the years, with the latest being in 2011, but that has since expired. In brief, the request is to extend the previously granted use permit for 55 Industrial Way and to include the yard behind 131 Industrial Way. Davy Tree has indicated that their fleet currently includes 14 vehicles and pieces of heavy equipment, including box trucks, chippers, aerial lift trucks, a crane, and tank trucks. The wood chips are from job sites and they are temporarily staged before being hauled away to a cogeneration plant in woodland. This request includes a modification from the previous approval to also allow for temporary staging of logs behind the warehouse at the 131 site. The logs are also recycled in woodland. As proposed, the staging area crosses the boundary, the southern portion of 55 Industrial Way and 131 Industrial Way, so the two addresses function as one yard. The vehicles and equipment area is located immediately behind a nine-foot-high slatted chain-link fence which you see in the photo here. The recyclable materials are located further to the rear of the site behind the vehicle and equipment storage area. The recyclable materials are loaded into large shipping containers and hauled off three times a week to the cogeneration plant. No chipping or cutting is proposed to be done on-site. Conditions of approval were previously adopted to comply with applicable state regulations as recommended and is administered by the county health department. During the fourth quarter of 2016, the county issued two violations, one for exceeding storage limits and one for fire control temperature of the wood chip piles being exceeded. It was also noted that the storage had been expanded beyond the previous approval and included some leafy limbs. Those issues have since been addressed by the applicant and staff met with the county and also fire department there on-site. As a result, county and North County Fire Authority as well provided some draft conditions for approval that place a little bit tighter controls on the day-to-day operations of the facility, and that would include inventory reporting to the county. These conditions address such things as chip pile height and monitoring and storage of leafy materials. I understand the applicant has purchased a probe that they can keep better track of the temperature inside the chip pile. Note that the conditions of this permit do not include a sunset date, as was previously included, but we have expanded on the revocation condition which applies to all use permits, and that's expanded to provide some specific conditions that would warrant the permit being referred back to the Planning Commission if needed. To approve a use permit, the Planning Commission must make findings as detailed in the agenda report. These findings speak to the nature of the use and whether or not it would be detrimental to the health and safety of persons working in the neighborhood, injurious to the neighborhood or the general welfare of the city. Given the conditions of approval, the application would meet these findings. In closing, staff recommends conditional approval of use permit by adoption of Resolution UP-10-16, which contains the findings and conditions of approval.
So shall we wait to hear from the applicant, or do we want to ask the staff anything prior to opening it to a hearing?
I don't have any questions.
I have one question.
Sure.
Hello?
Did you turn it on?
Oh, sorry. There you go. I would like to ask, you mentioned a sunset date. Are you talking about expiration date for the permit?
That's correct.
So it's in perpetuity?
This would be, it could be, as long as that kind of business continued there, assuming there's no issues, and generally, that's how use permits are structured, is without a sunset date. Initially, this had sunset dates on the previous permits. Staff does not see a need for that, as long as they're abiding by the conditions of approval.
Thank you.
Okay. So can we have a motion to open it up to a public hearing, please?
I'll motion that we open public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please step forward.
Hi. Could you identify yourself for the record? My name is Brian Baker. I'm the district manager for the Davy Tree Expert Company located at 131 Industrial Way.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
So would you like to share first, or did you want us to just ask questions?
I think Ken did a great job. I'm open to questions if there need to be any clarification.
Okay. I have one question.
Sure.
The two violations for storage limit and one for fire control temperature of the wood chips, right, so has there ever been a fire in these wood chip piles?
No.
Has there ever been anything close to a fire in these piles?
No, and that's what was concerning at the time. I didn't even realize that he'd found a hot spot, which can happen over time if the material's not turned over, and so we assumed that he'd found an area that was kind of off to the side that hasn't been collected as regularly, or it was just able to cultivate those temperatures. But no, we've never experienced a fire or anything close to it, just because of the frequency in which we typically turn our materials over.
Right, so obviously, this time that was overlooked.
Well, it was a warning temperature. It was of concern to him, but after meeting with the fire marshal, he wasn't necessarily concerned about the temperature, but the county official who probed at that time thought it was a warning temperature by his estimation, so.
So you now have a probe stick that you go around and just take temperatures of the internal piles?
Yeah, so I have a probe with a three-foot prong, a probe on it, so we can get internal temperatures and do kind of a random spot check daily, so we can have a temperature log. Part of the process of talking with the county official was that we're going to have a log book, and if the temperatures start to creep up, just show corrective action so that we can document what we're doing to obey those temperatures.
I mean, typically, that's just moving the material around.
Either moving it around or just getting it out.
Getting it out of there, okay.
Generally, our process is just to get it out before that becomes an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. The additional area that you're applying for behind 131 Industrial Way, and what I see from the site map, it narrows in that configuration, and I believe that's where the large logs are to be stored, is that correct?
That is correct.
Are any vehicles ever parked there?
No, we have to keep it open for accessing those logs with a loader, and so there is a passage through the yard, which vehicles can drive around going through the shop and make the loop out to the gate, but we don't store vehicles back behind the shop itself, in between the logs and the shop.
Okay, and additionally, the area where the wood chips are stored, there's no vehicles parked in very close proximity from what I've seen, is that correct?
The only piece of equipment that's close is the loader, which is used to offhaul the materials.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions?
Yep.
We're good? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing, please?
I motion to close the public hearing now.
Second up?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do you have any additional discussion?
Nope.
No? Okay, so shall we make a decision? Okay. So approval?
I motion to approve. Use permit UP-10-16.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Okay, so moving on to old business. Continued public hearing zoning text amendment, RZ-6-16, zoning text amendments to chapter 17.02, 17.06, 17.08, 17.10, 17.12, 17.16, 17.18, 17.19, and adding new chapter 17.33 to title 17, zoning of the Brisbane Municipal Code to define and regulate medical cannabis-related activities and businesses in various zones within the city of Brisbane. City of Brisbane is the applicant. Staff report, please.
Great, thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
So the zoning text amendments before you tonight are city council-initiated amendments pertaining to the regulation of personal cultivation of medical cannabis, as well as regulating certain medical cannabis businesses in town. So just to provide some overall framework for the amendments we're considering tonight at the state level, there's several state laws that regulate the different pieces that we're looking at tonight. First of which is the Compassionate Use Act, which is almost 20 years old, or 20 years old exactly now, which allowed qualified patients and their caregivers to cultivate medical cannabis for their personal use as a medical product. And also, more recently, in the fall of 2015, the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act was passed, or MRSA for short. This created a state licensing structure for medical cannabis businesses of a variety of types. The structure that was established is a dual licensing structure, meaning that in order to have a state license, the business has to get a local permit, or it has to be allowed by the local jurisdiction. That being said, cities have a lot of control over what businesses may operate in their Another recent piece of legislation that I won't go too deeply into tonight, but the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, which was recently enacted by state initiative, which legalized recreational use of marijuana. The regulations you guys are looking at tonight are strictly related to medical cannabis. I believe that council will be looking at the recreational provisions at an upcoming meeting, but just to focus our discussion tonight, it's just on the medical cannabis. So the city council discussed both the MRSA and the issue of personal medical cannabis regulation last year, and their direction after their discussion was to expressly ban dispensaries, which is the retail sale, direct to consumers, of medical cannabis. Along with that, they also adopted a resolution affirming the fact that our zoning ordinance currently prohibits commercial cultivation. We don't allow any ag uses in town that includes medical cannabis. In terms of what the council was interested in regulating, they indicated that they wanted to allow testing of medical cannabis by right in certain districts. They also were interested in conditionally allowing the manufacturing, processing, transporting, distribution, and warehousing of medical cannabis, so again, as conditional uses. Council also was interested in allowing personal cultivation of medical cannabis in residential districts, certain limitations. And they also indicated they wanted to allow delivery of medical cannabis, which would be, you know, similar to a pizza delivery, you know, by vehicle, by order, that patients could order medical cannabis and have it delivered to them. So the amendments before you tonight, I'll kind of break up the presentation into the two categories, the first being the personal cultivation, so that would involve some discreet amendments to the zoning ordinance to allow the personal cultivation in residential districts as accessory use, an accessory use. It would also, we're proposing amendments to the Health and Safety Code, which is in Title VIII, and typically enforced by the police department, which would have performance standards for that cultivation, so that could include the limiting the location, the amount, imposing security requirements, et cetera, for that personal cultivation. And the second category being the medical cannabis businesses, so the amendments, again, would be to be consistent with the council's direction in terms of the types of businesses that they were interested in, and whether or not they would be permitted by right or conditionally per their direction. I just want to note, too, for deliveries, we determine that it's not necessarily something that needs express zoning approval, it's not necessarily a land use, because the council was not interested in allowing dispensaries. Basically, what that means is that we allow deliveries within town, but they would have to be from a dispensary licensed elsewhere. Okay, so starting with personal cultivation, so the amendments, again, we would add, proposing to add terms to the definitions relating to personal cultivation, and this is pulling from the state's codes, so we actually have suggested just referencing how the state defines the primary caregiver, as well as qualified patient. It also would add personal cultivation as a permitted accessory use in all the residential districts. So accessory uses, they're subordinate to the primary use, the intent behind that being that any sort of cultivation occurring on-site, you would need to still maintain the primary residential use of that home. So a situation, for example, where no one was living in the home, or all of the bedrooms, kitchens, and bathrooms are being used for cultivation, you know, that would no longer be primarily a residential residence. That's the intent behind that. And then the proposed amendments to Title VIII would be a new chapter, again, containing performance standards. We worked with the police department on this to kind of identify their concerns in terms of enforcement and regulation and impacts to the neighborhood quality of life. So the standards that we're proposing would include limiting cultivation to one area, so it could not be scattered, you know, either outdoors, it has to be either in a room, in a home, or in enclosure, or in accessory structure that's fenced. Cultivation area would be capped at 100 square feet, and the maximum number of plants would be as the state allows, which is six mature or 12 immature plants per qualified patient. However, the police are recommending an overall cap of 50 plants per residence in a situation where you might have multiple patients, or a caregiver who has multiple patients and might be cultivating for them. Again, there's requirements for the cultivation area to be secured, so that unintended users could not access it. Also, our requirements for meeting building code, for, you know, any ventilation or electrical, you know, power access, would all have to meet code. And then also documentation of the patient status or caregiver status in the form of the ID card that's issued by the state. And then something that was initiated by one of the commissioners was looking at potentially, you know, conflicts between a family childcare home, which we do allow childcare homes of various sizes in our residential districts. The feedback, or the research that we provided is attached to your staff report, and I won't go too into detail, but essentially, the state licensing requirements are, in order to get a license, all potentially dangerous, you know, items, materials must be secured and out of the access to the children. Before a property is licensed, they have to have an onsite inspection from a state employee who would ostensibly be verifying that, and then also, they'd be subject to random inspections over time and any complaint-based inspections as well. So there's some built-in considerations there from the state, and then additionally, what we're proposing in Title VIII, in terms of the requirements for, you know, securing the cultivation area, whether it's indoor or outdoor, we believe would speak to keeping those materials out of young hands. And I'll pause here, if there's any questions on that part of the ordinance, I'm happy to answer those before we move on, or we could move on.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
With regard to the family childcare homes, I can understand if it's a new business, and it would require the inspection prior to being licensed for the business, but let's take a scenario where someone already has a family childcare home, and one of the operators of this home gets a qualified patient status. How would Health and Human Services, I believe, Department of Social Services, is there any inter-agency notification, because it seems like that could slip through the cracks where no one ever goes and inspects the premises to make sure that things are secured?
I think that's a good question. When it comes to the city's permitting process, you know, if it's a home of serving fewer, then, I think, is it, yeah, serving up to eight children, it's permitted by right, so other than getting a business license from the city, it wouldn't necessarily require a use permit. I think it's a good point for us to follow up on to see how we could potentially, you know, notify businesses, or the state.
Yeah, I think we got to look into this, because the state, I was wondering how often they, if they did an annual inspection or not, but it looks like their minimum is not less than every five years, obviously, things can change. Why don't we look into that in terms of what the opportunities would be to provide that information to the state licensing board?
Because even if they show up with an unannounced inspection, if they don't know the person is doing this on-site, they wouldn't even be looking for it necessarily.
So in terms of the city, oh, thank you very much for following up on this question, Julia. So in terms of the city, aside from the performance standards, there's not much we can do in terms of limiting or monitoring these type of activities, right?
No, and, you know, it's suggested, so in the text of the Title VIII amendments, it basically says that people may notify the police department confidentially that they are embarking on these activities, more so as kind of a failsafe for them, so that if there's a call, you know, made, that we, you know, PD could have a reference internally to say, well, they've checked in with us, we've, you know, inspected and everything's okay. But in terms of active enforcement, much like most code enforcement here, it's largely complaint-based, so it would really, you know, depend on neighbors or someone thinking that something might not be in compliance with the regulations to notify the city to follow up on.
Anyone else have any questions right now?
Has the city ever followed up on a complaint about alcohol, or firearms, or other legal items in relation to exposure to children in childcare?
I can't really speak to that necessarily, I think that'd be more of a PD.
Not really a typical situation, probably.
Not something we would really address in zoning or that sort of thing, but not to say it hasn't happened, but I really don't know.
Okay.
I have a small point. If we can look at page H1-17, and John, this is further to my question to you about this. H-12-010, the purpose of the chapter is to implement California Health and Safety Code Section 11365, 2-5, known as Compassionate Use Act, relating to the regulation cultivation of possession of medical cannabis by an individual patient or caregiver at the patient or caregiver's home. So I'm being a little pedantic, because when you answered my question, you said it was covered here, but when we go down further, so that just says caregiver, it doesn't say primary caregiver, and I think there could be some confusion with that, if it is only meant to be the primary caregiver. Is it any caregiver, or is the law about primary caregiver?
No, we should, the purpose should refer to the primary caregiver.
Okay, so if we could just make that consistent throughout the document, because I noticed there were some things that were not. Thanks.
Any, anything else, or should we move on?
I'm ready to move on.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on to medical cannabis businesses. So the zoning text amendments would propose amending certain definitions that we already have in our code pertaining to research and development. Specifically, that would be amended to state explicitly that it would include marijuana or cannabis, medical cannabis testing. It would also amend the definition of retail rental sales to clarify that that does not include the dispensing of cannabis. That was the way staff is proposing moving forward with a express ban on dispensaries. We also would propose addition of new definitions related to medical cannabis business terms, so cannabis, medical cannabis, and medical cannabis product. The definition of medical cannabis being limited to those categories which the council had indicated they were interested in, which is including distribution, manufacturing, and warehousing, and those are all housed under the medical cannabis business definition. Also clarifies that the definition of medical cannabis business states explicitly that it does not include dispensaries or commercial cultivation. So looking at the SCRO1, research and development is an existing conditional use, so that use stands, and what we're proposing is an addition of text referring to performance standards for any sort of medical cannabis R&amp;D in a new chapter, which I'll go over in a bit. Similarly, in the Sierra Point Commercial District, research and development is already permitted, we would add the same reference there to the performance standards that we're proposing in the new chapter. And then in the Crocker Park Trade Commercial District, we would propose addition of medical cannabis businesses as conditional use, and the research and development is an existing conditional use, and again, the reference would be added to the new performance standards in Chapter 17.33. So the new chapter in the Title XV, the primary intent would be to regulate the operation of these businesses, and the research and development activities, with the primary intent to safeguard health and welfare of not only those employees and owners of the business, but of course, the community at large. So these performance standards are pretty detailed, and I'll summarize them here. So first of all, requirements for state licensing or accreditation, when that becomes available, all indications point to 2018, for the state licensing structure to go live, also requiring standard hours of operation, security system requirements, and inspections, which would be at the discretion of the police department, police chief, or designee. It would also restrict business activities to the interior of the building, so to limit offloading, or other activities where product is left out of doors, potentially in not as secure areas, that would be restricted by these recommended standards. And again, we worked with PD on all of these, to kind of identify what they were most concerned with, and they've indicated their support for what is, what's proposed. The other segment of the new chapter would require that any medical cannabis business, or research and development business, submit a application that includes, you know, detailed information about the business owners, their ownership structure, the actual scope of their operations, in regards to how much raw material is coming onsite and moving offsite, what's being stored on a daily basis, you know, detailed information about the day-to-day operations of these businesses that might pertain to certain security concerns. Also required with these business applications, which would accompany either the use permit or business license, would be any floor plans, electrical plans, anything related to the tenant improvement of the structure itself, for the safe operations of their business. And I will stop for questions here as well. If there are any other questions?
I do have one. I'm on page H119. And I'm looking at number nine, where it says, "For the convenience of the qualified patient or primary caregiver, to promote building safety, to insist in the enforcement of this chapter, avoid unnecessary confiscation and destruction of medical cannabis plants, and unnecessary law enforcement investigations. The qualified patient or primary caretaker," and again, what Commissioner Cunningham pointed out, I try to get all the verbiage the same throughout this, so primary caregiver, "growing medical cannabis pursuant to this chapter may notify the City of Brisbane regarding the cultivation site." So my question is "may," is this arbitrary? Are we saying it's voluntary?
So again, yes, it would be. It's, it's not a requirement, because they're not, it doesn't require a permit, it doesn't require necessarily city permission to do this, so yes, it would be voluntary.
So it says, it further clarifies, "shall not be considered public record under the California Public Records Act." So I'm just going to refer back to where we talked about the family childcare homes. Is there anything in the business licensing of those homes, because it comes up for a business license renewal, that you could require disclosure, or is that impossible? Simply that you would know?
Yeah, we'd have to double-check that.
Whether that's legal.
Yeah, because again, even the idea of, I'm not even sure if it's business licensing, because these kind of small, small-sized facilities are considered sort of akin to a permitted use, so I don't even know if the city requires a business license, if that is the case, okay. We can look into whether or not, again, what kind of notification is legal, and goes beyond our bounds, definitely.
Thank you.
Anyone else for now?
Yes, I was wondering if there was any discussion when the city council examined this, on the current state of federal marijuana laws, and federal enforcement of marijuana laws?
There wasn't significant discussion of that, I mean, it tends to be a little bit of a, the conversations we had with the police department is that, again, the scale of operation tends to be something that may or may not attract federal sort of interest, and I don't think anybody perceives the kind of scale of business opportunity in Brisbane as something that would, that would be attracting kind of undue federal attention, as opposed to any other jurisdiction that's, that's, you know, operating under the same state rules and regulations.
Do you know if the 2015 CARES Act has expired or been passed?
Do you have a bill number associated with that?
Yeah, give me a minute. It's S683, 114th Congress, 2015.
That hasn't come up in the research I did for this, we'll have to follow up on that for you. Is it?
My understanding is that it expired in December of 2016, but I didn't hear explicitly if it passed or was dismissed, but since I didn't hear that it was passed, I'm assuming it expired.
Okay, and what did it regulate?
Oh, it was designed to reconcile inconsistencies between federal and state laws with respect to medical marijuana use, essentially.
Okay.
Not, making it not an issue for federal prosecution, and states that legalize marijuana.
Okay, we'll research that for you guys.
I don't believe that it passed. Can't prove the negatives, so I thought I'd ask.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions?
Number question?
Okay. So just in closing, we're recommending approval, or, excuse me, we're recommending that you recommend approval of the text amendments to the Title XV, the zoning ordinance. Again, since the Title VIII amendments aren't under your authority or purview, you're welcome to comment on those as well, but what you'd be recommending adoption of would be the Title XV amendments. So with that all, and the staff report, and if you have any other questions, happy to answer those, or have your discussion.
No, I would be happy, as long as we change some of that verbiage.
Okay.
To correct, and make things.
Consistent?
Consistent, thank you.
I don't have any questions.
I just had a comment, and it's really just coming from my own opinion, the council chose to take a very narrow scope prohibiting retail of any sort, and also cultivation. And I understand this is a hot issue, and that it elicits all kinds of very strong opinions, pro or con. At the same time, I think that going down the road, from what I've read, this is going to become very frequently accepted in some cities. And the acceptance of it carries some rather significant financial benefits to those communities, because cities can enact their own excise taxes to their benefit. And while I appreciate the burden on police, the state law also provides for sharing of those excise taxes for enforcement. So my comment is really just perhaps from me, I don't know if my fellow commissioners agree, that perhaps in the future, the council endeavor to look at the possibility of accepting cultivation or retail, and whether it's worthwhile with the trade-offs, whether we want to just strictly prohibit, what other communities are doing, how they fare in terms of enforcement, because my impression is that this is going to be an extremely tightly regulated business. And it may not carry all the visceral reactions that we have about it's going to be lawless, and it's going to be a problem, it may or may not, but I would just personally like to see the council at a future date revisit this, in terms of retail or cultivation. Thank you.
I actually have the opposite recommendation. Well, I am hopeful that at some point, the federal law might be resolved in this area. I personally don't think that it's appropriate for the city to be licensing businesses for something that's currently not federally allowed. I don't have any problems with the personal use amendments, or deliveries, which I understand are necessary anyway, in this text, but it would be my recommendation to strike all of the sections approving business use until such a time as the federal-state disparity is resolved.
Okay.
I have no comment.
I also have no additional comment. So, the staff is recommending that we approve Title XV. What is the commission's feeling on that?
Just through the chair, I know there's nobody here, but the formality of this is a public hearing, so let's.
Okay. So shall we have a motion to open it to public hearing?
Again, just through the chair, we don't need, it's been advertised as a public hearing, so you don't need to actually.
Okay, we don't need to actually vote for that.
Yes, just open the public hearing, and accept the motion to close it when you're ready.
Okay. So, we'll open it up to a public hearing, and seeing no one here, we are going to need a motion to close the public hearing.
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, what do we say to the recommendation before us?
Well, I expect I'm probably going to get outvoted, so I might suggest that the simplest course of action is that someone make a motion, and then you can vote, and I will simply abstain. It would be more complicated to go through specific removals that probably won't get removed.
Well, I would make a motion to approve, let me get back there, the verbiage here. Lost my page, what page am I on?
Which one are you at?
Thank you.
Or are you looking for the staff recommendation?
What we're approving.
Okay, that would be H12, the adoption of the attached draft resolution. Right beginning?
Getting there.
Yep.
A long document.
That's to consider.
Yeah, okay.
See it?
No.
Yeah, I can give it to you.
Thank you. I will make a motion to adopt, for the adoption of the attached draft resolution, RZ-6-16, recommending approval of the proposed zoning text amendments to the city council. Do we add here with minor? What's that verbiage?
Since the suggestions were limited to the Title VIII, we can just make those, since they're not part of your zoning.
Okay.
Got it.
Roundabout way.
Okay, so do we have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll simply abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Okay, so items initiated by the staff?
I just have a couple items. One was that the development agreement for the Opus Office Building project in Sierra Point was approved by the council, I received the second reading, pretty much as was recommended by the commission. There's a Baylands meeting upcoming next Thursday evening, I think the topics are air quality, noise, greenhouse gas emissions, so another council public hearing. And as Julia pointed out, upcoming and next regular council meeting in March, they will be getting an update from the city attorney regarding the recreational marijuana bill that passed, the initiative that passed in November, and again, these could result in the need to, to modify either the zoning ordinance, or perhaps Title VIII of the municipal code, so see what the council direction is at that point, and whether or not we're back before you with additional amendments at that time, we'll just have to wait and see. And that would be it for staff items.
Okay, on to items initiated by the commission. I had a couple, oh, a question about the academy, now that we have two commissioners, I don't know if that's still available.
Unfortunately, we found out it was sold out.
Wow, okay, okay.
Apologize for that, and the short notice with the appointments, it was not very.
The timing didn't work out very well, yeah.
Worked out well for people, so apologize for that. And certainly, sometimes the local planning chapter does have maybe less intensive or comprehensive training, but maybe on individual topics, sometimes oriented toward commissioners, we'll certainly, if those do come up, we'll make the commission aware of those opportunities as well, and if they do come up in the upcoming year.
Thank you. So I wanted to thank our former vice chair, Reinhardt, and our commissioner, Helen Parker, who've turned out, so we really appreciate the service they provided for our community, and we miss them, but we also, at the same time, welcome two new commissioners, Commissioner Cunningham and Commissioner Mackin, so thank you very much for serving with us. And I don't, I guess we can move on to the selection issue, but we are missing Commissioner Munir, and I think that it would behoove us to have the opinion of every commissioner when we select our officers, so.
Well, certainly, if that's your prerogative, there's not a requirement in your, in your bylaws for a full five, and I believe Commissioner Mackin will be unavailable in the second meeting in February, so that means if you take that approach, you'd be pushing out until March before you make that selection.
So given that additional information, what do we think?
I have no objection to waiting until March.
I have no problem with that as well.
I have no problem.
Okay, so can we wait to March?
I would only suggest that you appoint, or take nominations for, to fill the vacant vice chairperson position, since Commissioner Reinhardt was the vice chair, so it would be useful to have a vice chair even in this interim period, so I would just suggest you take that action.
Okay. Can we get a volunteer? Not everybody step forward at once.
Greg, why don't you do it since you're longest on here right now?
As long as we are revisiting the entire issue in March, then I am happy to be vice chair. I seem to always draw the short straw when both you and Dave were out. I'll continue my role.
Thank you for serving.
Take it for the team.
Vice, vice chair.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving as our interim. Awesome, okay. Any other suggestions? Okay, so can we have a motion to adjourn to our regular meeting of February? Okay, so, can we have a motion to adjourn to our regular meeting of February 23rd?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting of February 23rd.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.